Well, let's catch up still.
Sewage and power, you know.
It's not sewage.
What is up with this computer?
Yeah.
That's because we've got to have a public hearing. No, we don't.
Or the family.
Yeah.
What's up Travis?
How you doing, how you doing?
How's the family, everybody good?
Oh, it's fine.
Fine in the summer.
Oh, I know.
I think so.
Okay. We talked about, yeah.
Yeah, no, you're.
Absolutely.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you for joining us. We have a lengthy agenda this app this evening, so let's get to it. So if you'd please join us for stand for the pledge of allegiance, remain standing at the invocation.
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Mayor Proton Waterman?
If you would please bow your heads. Father God, we thank you for this day. We thank you for the opportunity that we have to serve this community. We pray your blessings on the men, women, and children of the city of Canton. We also pray your blessings on the men and women charged with keeping us safe. The Canton Police Department and the Cherokee County Fire Department. I pray for this council meeting tonight. Give us the wisdom and guidance as we discuss items before us. May each decision be righteous in your sight for our benefit and for your glory. It is in your holy name that we pray. Amen.
Amen. To call our July eleventh, twenty twenty four meeting to order. As I mentioned, we have a lengthy agenda due to us missing our June meeting, second June meeting, and then this meeting getting pushed back to July eleventh from July fourth from the holiday. Hope you all had a great July fourth holiday. Have a lot of items to for discussion tonight and consideration for our second meeting in July, which will be next Thursday. So you only have one week to 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 miss us in that absence there. So so we'll get started here tonight and be efficient as possible. I'd like to begin with the consideration to approve tonight's agenda. Are there any additions or revisions or motions?
Motion to approve. Second.
Motion to approve in a second. All in favor say aye. Opposed nay. All members voted for the motion. We do have some guests and visitors here tonight. We're always happy to have the Cherokee Fire and EMS updates from Chief Eddie Robinson. So Chief Robinson, great to see you as always and look forward to your report. Thank you for coming.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Counsel, I'm conscious of your busy agenda, so I'm going to move through these slides relatively quickly. But please don't hesitate to stop me and ask me any questions you may have. It is an honor for me to be here tonight to be able to present this information on behalf of the men and women of Cherokee County Fire Department. We're very happy that we had an opportunity to celebrate our fiftieth anniversary this this past year. And for the past seven years, you know, we've had our partnership agreement with the city of Canton and what a great partnership that has been. So I'm very, very proud of our fifty years of service and very proud of our relationship with with the city. We also received their international accreditation and international accreditation, it's a huge deal. It's a it's a process that forces us to continually assess our department and look for ways to continue to improve. And there's there's three hundred and twenty fully accredited fire departments worldwide. And in the United States, there's only three hundred and eight. In the state of Georgia, there's fourteen. And out of the fourteen in the state of Georgia, five of those are DOD departments. That leaves nine fire departments that are fully accredited through the Commission on Fire Accreditation International, which is a it speaks it speaks volumes of the work that these guys behind me are doing for sure. We also have a national accreditation for our paramedic training program, and we're also equally equally proud of that. We have some personal highlights. We were recognized by the the state region as the EMS Agency of the Year, which is again significant deal. We our fire muster team, it's it's something new that we started doing. They competed at the state level and took some second and third place prizes. And they're working hard. They're going to go back again this year, and I'm quite confident we'll come home with some first place prizes. I'm also happy to announce that there's going to be a fire muster actually held here in Canton on August twenty fourth at Reformation Brewery. It's not a fire department hosted event. It's a group of firefighters that have a organization put together. It's a charitable organization. But there'll probably be a hundred and fifty or so firefighters from around the state, and we'd love to have you guys come out and and observe that. I think you you would enjoy what you saw. Deputy Chief Shane West was selected by his peers throughout the state of Georgia as the Chief Fire Officer of the Year for the state, which is quite an accomplishment. And it's always a lot of fun when we come out on top of our annual guns and hoses race. And any opportunity I get to highlight that, I certainly like to do it. We we staffed Fire Station Twenty Nine in twenty twenty three, and that's really helping our response out in the Canton marketplace area. Currently, it's in a temporary facility at the old Georgia Forestry Commission property. And we will be building a new fire station out closer to Union Hill Road. But with the improvements to Highway Twenty, again, that's going to help us to improve those response times as those businesses in that community continues to grow. So we reorganized in twenty twenty three. We have four different divisions now, and you'll see those divisions up on the board in front of you. The first one, our Personal Services Division, has those different branches underneath it. And we had four hundred and ninety-three total positions in the fire department with four hundred and eighty of those being full time position. You know that four hundred and thirty-one of those positions serve in field operation with four hundred and twenty of those positions being full time. And then the sixty-two support staff and administrative positions, that includes all of our Fire Marshal's Office, all of our Education Division, all the administrative staff at headquarters. The majority of those personnel are dual certified, meaning that they are able to jump on apparatus and respond to calls when we have those significant weather events and things of that nature. And and quite often, they you'll see these guys out with a chainsaw crew or whatever it may be, clearing roads or responding to to emergency calls. Budget's always something that people are interested in, and in twenty twenty three, our total budget with fire and EMS was around sixty-one point four million dollars. The Canton contribution to the fire fund portion of that budget was five million eight hundred and eighty-five thousand, which is equal to twelve point nine nine percent of that total budget. And like everybody else's budget, you'll see that the the bulk of that expense is in in personnel. Moving along, you guys helped to celebrate the purchase of two brand new fire engines for the downtown station and the South Canton Station. Those fire engines are costing about a million dollars apiece now, and it's a two and a half to three year lead time on getting those apparatus. We purchased these apparatus with SPOLOs funds, and the purpose for utilizing SPOLOs to purchase these apparatus was to try to preserve the impact fee monies that were are collected in hopes of coming up with a solution for that downtown fire station very soon. So from a call perspective, the county ran a total of thirty-two thousand eight hundred and thirty-seven calls last year. Five thousand five hundred and sixty-eight of those were in the city limits of Canton. That's equivalent to about sixteen point nine percent of the total calls. So I'm I'm really pleased and happy to report that city residents are really getting a good return on their investment with the amount of fire fund investment versus the amount of calls. And it really all kind of works itself out to be very equal because you guys continue to provide your own fire marshal services here in the city. And then EMS, of course, is work and the contributions of the personnel paying for the ambulance response and through the general fund, it all works out very well. So looking at some incident volume, if you look back to around two thousand seventeen, the census tells us there were around twenty-eight thousand people in the city, and we were responding to about four thousand three hundred calls at that time. In twenty twenty three, we responded to that five hundred or five thousand five hundred and sixty-eight calls. Right now, we're trending towards for twenty twenty four to be around that six thousand one hundred mark, and that population's up by, you know, ten thousand plus people now. Carrying that same momentum on through the the year twenty thirty, you'll notice the forty-five thousand personnel mark is what the census is projected as we can see it. And we anticipate that that we will be, you know, in in excess of eight thousand calls. And who really knows that number? It really depends on the age of the community and many other factors. So next is our Field Operations Division. You can see the branches under Field Operations. The city of Canton is protected directly by eight fire stations now. Of the twenty-four fire stations that we have, there's the two that are inside the city limits. And then you can see the balance of stations that respond to calls first view in the area, even though those fire stations are outside of the city limits. But those stations that are inside the city limits also respond to calls out into the county as well. So it's it's really a great partnership. I do want to put just a little bit of special emphasis on special operations. With the Etowah River, the increased activities that we're seeing on the Etowah River, special operations is becoming more and more busy. Recently, just as an example, over behind the American Legion, we had five people that were in a raft, and there was some debris in the river. And they came around that bend, and the water picks up and gets a little sweeper there, and they actually submarined underneath that debris. And all five of them were clinging to that debris, and we activated our swift water personnel and actually had two boats in the water. They keep one downstream for anybody that may need rescue and that's missed by that first team that's actually up conducting the rescue. It was a very successful operation, and we anticipate that we'll continue to see see more and more of that as the activity on the river increases. We'll be ready for that type of response is is the point I'll make. Support Services Training and Logistics, again, our personnel trained up to the tune of about two hundred thousand hours last year. We graduated fifty-five new recruits at the advanced EMT level and twenty-one new paramedics completed training as as well. Proud of proud of those statistics as always. Logistics does a lot of things for our fire department. Most people think that they just deliver medical supplies and what have you. These guys are chainsaw sharpening, they're servicing all of our breathing apparatus, all of our protective clothing, their vehicle extrication tools. They're responsible for every piece of equipment and really every item that is purchased and received for operations through the fire department is processed through our logistics division. Then our last division is probably the most important division, one of the most important divisions, and that's our Community Risk Reduction. As Fire Chief, I'm a firm believer that if we can prevent emergencies from happening in the first place or educate people on how to respond in the event that there is an emergency, we're so much better doing that than we are having to respond to that incident where where people are unprepared. You'll see a lot of things that risk reduction does. Everything that's highlighted in gray, those are tangible items that were distributed to citizens throughout the county to include within the the city limits. Those smoke detectors, that's huge. The the flirtation devices, bike helmets, goes on and on. And all of those education programs that are provided through the Cherokee County School System touch those students that reside within the city limits of Canton. We do an eighth grade program, and every fourth grader that comes through the school system is is touched every year. So just a couple of quick announcements is I'm very honored to have made acquaintance with your new police chief. He's a great guy, tons of experience, and I just want to report that we are able to really celebrate, if you will, a great relationship with with your local law enforcement, and that is so vital for for our response. So Chief Farrell, we ask that we continue to keep that going. We're always going to be kind of throwing little punches and having a lot of fun with each other. For example, if if I was to say congratulations to the new Lieutenant Hamilton, wherever he is, he'd probably get me back sometime. If I and if I went on and pointed out that he was in the Georgia Trend Magazine and top ten and ten, he'd probably really want to come after me at some point. But no, we're happy, and we really do enjoy that relationship. We were able to maintain our ISO classification of the two-two Y. We were evaluated in twenty twenty three. We've received that report, and we're going to continue to carry that classification and continue to provide services and do everything within our power to help the property owners in the city and the county, you know, be able to to secure their homeowners and property insurance at the at the best possible rate they can. So I'm going to wrap it up by talking about the facility downtown. You know, I presented to you guys last year, and I told you, we really exhausted about every option that we can possibly exhaust. We've had some conversation with Mr. Peppers and actually asked for his approval if we could do some evaluations of the current building. And we have drafted an IGA and sent it over to him. And once you guys have an opportunity to review that agreement, we feel like this is probably the the best location for us to be able to continue our operations in the city. We're dedicated to maintaining the historical presence of that building as it is. But it really works good when we have the events that you guys are having downtown with First Friday and everything to have us operate now that building. And I feel like the community really likes having us there, and quite frankly, we we like being there. So hopefully, we'll be able to to get that worked out, and we'll come back to a meeting in the future and and have some more discussion with your approval on that. So we'll wrap it up with a slide that says thank you. A couple of interesting points. You see a couple of firefighters there with some dogs. Just to give you another example, the kind of work that firefighters do is that was a motor vehicle accident, and the personnel had to be transported. And what was going to happen to the dogs? Well, they went back to the firehouse and enjoyed some time with the firefighters until they could be reunited. And the active shooter training that we're doing in the schools and beyond is it's it's pretty amazing. So with that, I'll just say thank you for your time and see if you have any questions for me, and if not, I'll get out of your way and let you get on to your busy agenda.
Awesome. Thank you, Chief. It's always an honor having you here. We appreciate your leadership. Appreciate all the hard work of men and women of Cherokee Fire Emergency Management Systems. Congratulations on your international accreditation, your other recognition in the EMS Agency of the Year. We're very proud of all that you do to keep our citizens safe, and we enjoy our partnership. That only gets better every year. So we we appreciate your report and and spending time with us, and thanks to all your team who joined us tonight as well.
Absolutely.
We welcome anytime.
The credit goes to those guys, for sure.
Definitely, definitely. So we appreciate your work and all that you do. So any questions for Chief at this point? Thank you, sir.
Thank you very much. I've left you guys with a copy of our actual annual report that has this information and some additional information. So feel free to reach out anytime I can ever do anything for you or answer any questions for you.
Thanks, sir. We appreciate it.
Great evening.
Okay, you too. Take care. We have one public hearing tonight before our business meeting, and that's the public hearing, the second public hearing of our twenty twenty four millage rate. And we'll have our third and final public hearing at our next meeting, next Thursday, July eighteenth. Ms. Forrester, welcome.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. So this is the second of three public hearings we're required to have on the millage rate if we were to raise the millage rate above the rollback rate. So the rollback rate is calculated at five point two eight seven, and staff is recommending a five point four millage rate. So you'll remember this slide from before. This graph is taken from the twenty twenty-three audit, and it shows that property taxes make up approximately eighteen percent of the city's total revenue. And the city of Canton's fortunate that we have a variety of revenue sources. But if the property tax were to decrease or increase, that would alter what we require from other sources. These are some advertisements that you've seen in the paper over the last month. These are required reportings, and the formatting is designed by the Georgia Department of Revenue. This is a history of the city of Canton's millage rate. As you can see, staff is recommending five point four percent again. So this would be the, what are we on now? Five, three, four, five, six, seven, eighth year if we continue on this course. This is a graphic demonstration of property tax payments. So anyone in the county, prior to any exemptions, because those differ per parcel, would see that sixty-three percent of their property taxes goes to the school district. Another eighteen percent has traditionally gone to the county, and the city of Canton, as it stands, this was last year's numbers, would receive about nineteen percent of the total property tax bill. With that nineteen percent that the city of Canton maintains, we provide following services that are listed on the right. And I'll just read through them in case anyone in the back can't see. So the city of Canton pays for police, fire, building inspections, code compliance, planning and zoning, tourism, road maintenance, park maintenance, theater programs, municipal court, communications, and general administration. This is an enlargement of one of the forms that was shown earlier that is designed by the Department of Revenue showing what the twenty twenty-four digest, which will affect our fiscal year twenty-five budget figures are. And at the current, you'll see that our net digest value is estimated over there in the right. If we maintain the five point four millage rate as we're suggesting, it could develop into a six hundred and thirty-nine thousand dollar net increase in tax revenues over the previous year. Tax increase is because of the increase in assessed values. As we're maintaining the millage rate, the total tax increases is affected by inflation, one point nine six percent. New construction makes up the largest amount at four point five seven percent. So you'll see the total digest increase. This is the history of Canton's millage rate over the last few years and the fire tax. As you see now, I'm just going through the twenty twenty-three tax year because those are definitive numbers. We're not sure what twenty twenty-four is going to hold. If the fire tax with the county is maintained at the two point seven six four percent, you'll see the city of Canton is left with the spread between the gray line and the green line. But through talks with the county and presentations that they've made, they're discussing increases to that fire tax. The largest potential increase that has mentioned would be a difference for the city of about four hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars. Here are some calculations that I expanded on. There the top calculation is the exact same calculation that was presented at the last hearing, and that just shows what the fair market value of a average home that is owner occupied is at the five point four millage rate. That annual property tax levy would be nine hundred and seventy-two dollars. If we went with the rollback rate, that annual property tax levy would be nine hundred and fifty-one dollars and sixty-six cents. So the difference is twenty dollars and thirty-four cents for a homestead property with no other exemptions. I ran the same calculation for homestead properties with a senior exemption. The top is if they maintain, if we maintain the five point four millage rate. So a senior with a four hundred and fifty thousand dollar home value would pay three hundred and sixty-seven dollars and twenty cents in property taxes. If we went with the rollback rate, the five point two eight seven, the senior would pay three hundred and fifty-nine dollars fifty-two cents. So the difference in the rollback and the five point four millage rate is seven dollars and sixty-eight cents for a senior. And this is just a brief summary on the senior exemptions. On the left, you'll see the year and then the total number of seniors' properties. And on the right, the graph will show what that value of the senior exemption is. So we're creeping up on two million dollars. So that's a two million dollar savings practically. It's one point nine million that seniors are receiving. But that's also nearly two million dollars that we have to find a way of funding from other sources in the budget. This is our schedule. You'll see we're at July eleventh. We have one more hearing July eighteenth, and that's when we'll be asking for an adoption of a rate. So I'm glad to hear your questions, any suggestions that you have for the next presentation. And I'll leave it at that.
Thank you, Ms. Forrester. At this point, we will open our public hearing, and we have one resident signed up to speak, and Mr. Thomas Weaver. Welcome.
Good afternoon, Mr. Mayor, members of council. My name is Thomas Weaver. I reside at one thirty-one Old Marietta here in Canton, Georgia, and thank you for recognizing me to speak during the our agenda tonight for our millage rate. As I alluded to in the last meeting, some about a month ago, I count myself fortunate that we have strong fiscal conservative leadership within this city and that the council's desire is based on its advertised five point four mils to hold that rate level for eight years running now, if that should be the will and desire of council as the vote turns out at the end. However, I don't envy your position with some estimated north of three thousand, better three thousand senior tax parcels that are receiving the senior exemption, which constitutes about twenty-five million dollars plus worth of assessed property values that are exempt from that taxation millage rate. And with the fire tax district proposals that's pending before the Board of Commissioners that this council doesn't have any control over, if they get everything that they're asking for, in addition to having to find the money to make up for the senior exemption for all of the expenses that we currently your fire tax expenditures would hover north of seven million in the worst case scenario. And although I can learn to better appreciate the desirability of wanting to have a fully funded fire department, no one complains when someone's house is on fire and the fire department arrives to put out the fire. No one complains. It's a good service to have, and we're benefit from the savings of the consolidation from years ago, an executive decision that was made at the hands of strong leadership. I just don't know exactly how the city is going to continue moving forward in the future to continue to keep the car on to continue to keep the car on the road and out of the ditch if you continue to hold. I know it's politically inconvenient and highly inexpedient to say, well, we're going to raise the millage rate. I know that's not an answer. But the alternative is true. I don't know how you're going to continue to do so without continuing to withdraw from your reserves. Councils of years past were wise to invest those funds in reserves, but the reserves are not going to last forever. In addition to using the reserves to pay for any gap the County Board of Commissioners creates in the fire tax rate, you're also proposing to raise, and you should, all of the salaries up to the max of 100 and, I think it's 105% for a salary cap, if that's also included, and that would also have to come from reserves. I loathe the thought that for all the people who want to move to the coolest small town in America, if they can't quite get the services they thought they were getting when they moved here, and for a nightmare for those whom already are here to wake up one day and find they no longer can receive the services they thought they once had. I don't know the answer. I'm not up here to complain. I don't envy your position, to be clear. As much as I would like for the Board of Commissioners to move forward and give the fire department a higher millage rate, to be able to allow them to move forward and get all of the services up to par to keep up with the county's growth as released from the Atlanta Regional Commission, I don't know how the city can continue to balance the competing interests between the senior tax exemptions, the fire raise and the fire millage raise that the Board of Commissioners is proposing, and continuing to provide all of the plethora of the, I believe it was, nine or 10 different services that the city currently already pays for in-house later city ran. I don't have the answers, but I'm going to watch and listen to see who does.
Thank you, Mr. Weaver. At this point, we will close our public hearing and open up to council for any discussion and questions for Ms. Forrester or our city manager. I will, one brief update, that city manager and I attended a meeting with Cherokee County today, a presentation of their millage rate and proposed budget, and heard some updates on that. And we're informed that they do intend to adopt their millage rate next Tuesday at their meeting, which means if they do, that will give us really the real numbers that we're looking at on fire and others to really make an informed decision on our millage rate and how that may impact ours before our discussion, our final public hearing on next Thursday and our vote, which is good news, that we don't always have that information before we adopt ours. So, Mr. Peppers, do you have some information to add to what has been discussed?
Just that we will continue to update what we provide as information to the community. And one of the things that I had emailed each of you earlier this week, and we'll make sure that we added to our next presentation, is a comparison of our tax rate versus the tax rates of the other jurisdictions. You know, sometimes it's confusing because not everybody handles their property taxes the same way. So, for example, the City of Ball Ground is actually talking about rolling back their property taxes, but they're only talking about rolling back that portion of the property taxes that doesn't impact fire because they actually bill for those separately. Holly Springs is talking about holding their property tax rate steady. But if they do that, they also show a separate fire rate on their tax bills. If the county fire rate goes up, then on the whole, their tax bills, their total taxing rate is going to go up as well. Alaska is similar to that. City of Canton, because of our senior exemption, we can't add a separate fire tax. So we have to absorb the fire tax within the millage rate that we have. And so if you're reading in the paper, you might see, for example, that Holly Springs has a millage rate of 3.841. Well, that's only the piece that's not fire-related. Their total millage rate is actually 6.782, and ours is only 5.4. So what we try to do is give you some even numbers to look at. Woodstock, for instance, is a little bit different than all the other cities because they provide their own fire services. But last year, their voters agreed to add an additional mil to their property taxes for parks and recreation projects. And this year, they'll see that additional mil added to their taxes, and Woodstock's budget is based off of increasing their other millage rates. So they're actually going to see an increase in their rates. This afternoon, we were playing with some things. We kind of put it together in an easier-to-read graph that we've given to you. We'll get this information out for the public as well, just so they can see it. We're happy to answer any questions. Occasionally, I'll get a question from a resident, you know, what this means to them. I don't have parcel-by-parcel tax bills, but I can tell you what it means based on last year's value. Or if you know what your assessment is, you receive that information. I can tell you what that means to you. I'm happy to do that. In short, you know, as Ms. Forrester mentioned, the difference for us between rolling the tax back and holding the millage rate steady is about $20 per home. That's $20. I get that. What I would be concerned with and what we always have to address with the council is, we could probably make up that $20 in fund balance this year. But next year, we may come to you and say, we need you to add $30 to the tax bill, and so you're having to change it again next year. And that's a little bit, I think, what they saw in Woodstock. Their tax rate actually went below ours last year. So they were slightly less expensive on property taxes. But this year, with the addition of that additional mil and the raising of their tax rate, they're higher than us again. And so they've had to adjust the other way. So, you know, we're always happy to answer any questions that you might have or that the public has. We have not received a lot of questions. I think I've received two emails on the subject over the last month and a half, and we were able to respond to those. If you get emails and you'd like for us to look at those, please pass them along our way. But I'm happy to answer any questions you might have as well.
Thank you, Mr. Peppers, and we appreciate all the extra data and information and the graphs. Everything helps put this discussion and decision and pending decision into context. Again, we are special in different ways that we do have the senior tax exemption, and we have the partnership with Cherokee County Fire from the consolidation seven years ago. And again, depending on what they decide to do is, you know, really impacts us and what difference we have to make up there in that scenario. So all this information is very helpful. I mean, I think it's fortunate. We're talking nuances this year at this point and still continuing all the amazing services and amenities and things that we're providing for our citizens. But again, we should have at our next meeting, we have that final piece of the equation with what the county is going to do and what they're going to do on the fire to look at, you know, exact numbers at that point. But any question for Mr. Peppers or Ms. Forrester tonight? Ms. McGrew?
I'm looking for what Ms. Forrester said was the fire millage rate as it is now, before they raise it.
It's currently at 2.764. They advertised raising it to 2.941. So if you're looking at the spreadsheet that I passed to you in the second set of columns under Cherokee County, the second column under there is fire, and so that gives you the historical of that particular rate. What we heard today in the conversation with the county is they have, I believe there's four options that they've discussed with the commission that range from the current rate all the way up to the one that they've advertised. And so, you know, the commission will land somewhere in that gap. When they land in that gap, that will tell us what our estimated expense will be on fire. If they do anything but hold their millage rate steady, by us holding our millage rate steady, we have to make up the gap of whatever their increase is from some other revenue source in the city.
Which I did some calculations. So right now, if they maintain the 2.764, we're estimating that our fire tax that we'll pay next May will be just over $6.7 million. If they go to the next level that they've advertised, the 2.825, that'll increase our payment by approximately $149,000. If they go to the next level, the 2.866 that they've advertised, that will increase our payment by over $250,000. And if they go to the highest millage rate that they've advertised, the 2.941, that would increase our payment by over $434,000.
Do you have any idea, ballpark, you know, just best guess? What, as it stands now, if they don't increase, how much will we have to take out of our reserve to do our services this year?
We're still building the budget. We normally will probably cut into our reserve with the budget that we bring to you. We have the room this year, but the recommendation at the 5.4 is just to maintain stability, predictability, and we can safely go into the reserve without worrying. The Georgia, the government, this is National Government Finance Officers Association, recommends that we maintain a minimum of two months of operating expenses in our reserve fund. Moody's Investor Services for Credit Ratings recommends that cities maintain at least five months. And we're probably around nine months.
Okay. And with fire at 2.7, that leaves us about 2.7 mils to run the city. It always just amazes me how we run the city on so few mils.
That's correct, and a large part of that is because of our diversified revenue sources.
Okay. And we have some gifted grant writers, too.
And the orange, the grant and contributions, that also includes its lost monies.
Thank you so much.
Definitely. I think all this information certainly helps explain, and spoke with Mr. Peppers this afternoon, and we should be looking at budget presentations, I believe, early August, so we'll have that. And of course, while we set our millage rate, we'll certainly inform our budget and final decisions there. And if we have to make up more money, where does that come from? Does it come from reserves? Or do we cut certain things that we need to consider there? So I think the really helpful graphic in the entire presentation is all helpful, but showing how much of the tax, total taxes citizens pay is really going to the school board. So making sure that everyone understands that, so.
Right. And that's, I really wanted to highlight that because people maybe don't realize what actually goes to the City of Canton for those vital services.
Right.
They just think about the bottom line.
And if you're specifically looking at that dollar up there, one of the things to keep in mind of the city's 19%, half of that is for fire. So if you were not a city resident, you would still be paying that to Cherokee County for fire services.
Right.
You would just be paying the county a larger piece, and the city that you're in may be a smaller piece.
These percentages are taken off of actual taxpayers, City of Canton taxpayer bills.
Definitely. Very helpful, so. Mr. Johnson?
In the event of a rollback, can you guys refresh me again? What's the approximate dollar amount of the shortfall that would need to be made up?
The difference is about $600,000. There's still, I want to say, 3,000 appeals that the Tax Assessor's Office still has out. So we can't give you concrete numbers. But it's about $600,000 to the total revenue stream between the 5.287 rollback and the 5.4.
And in a situation where the, if council decided to do the rollback and Cherokee County decided to do the maximum on fire service that they've advertised, it's about $1 million in swing that we would have to take from fund balance. Thank you.
Anything else? Thank you, everyone. Okay, we will now begin our business meeting. You have in your packet the draft minutes for our meeting on June 6th. Any corrections, revisions, or motions for those minutes? Anyone?
Motion to approve the minutes as a presentation?
Thank you, sir. Do we have a second?
Second.
Motion and second. All favors say aye.
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 Opposed nay. All members voted for the motion. We have three informational items this evening. They are for, the first two are for information only, no discussion. These are upcoming cases that will be coming before us in August. Item A, which again, for information only, is MPA 2404-010, request to remove the requirement for a water tank within the Laurel Canyon development. Mr. Green?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of council. As you just described this application, the applicant is seeking to remove condition number 40 that was written in Ms. Garrett's letter in February of 2005. This required the installation of a water tank within the Laurel Canyon development. The 2005 master plan shows where this water tank was proposed to go, and it is in Pod 2. This will come before you guys as a public hearing item on August 1st.
Thank you, Ms. Green. Item B, again, for information only, annexation, rezoning, master plan, and conditional use permit requests submitted by P Ridge Land Investments LLC.
Again, these are for public hearing applications for annexation, rezoning of the property, master plan, which is required due to the zoning category they're seeking, and a conditional use permit for the proposed townhomes within the development. And the applicant is seeking to annex approximately 62.22 acres into the city limits. This will be combined with an existing approximately eight and a half acres that are currently within the city for a commercial and residential development. Now, the project will contain 32 townhomes, 196 single-family detached homes, and a small commercial restaurant node located just off of Reservoir Drive. This will come before you folks as well on August 1st as a public hearing item.
Thank you, Ms. Green. Item C, review of May financials you have in your packet. And Ms. Forrester? Welcome back.
So I only had a few noteworthy items to mention this evening, considering the millage rate talks we're having and then an item that's coming up later this afternoon, evening, regarding the franchise fees. Just wanted to highlight that you'll notice a decline in cash for the general fund because we paid in May the property and liability insurance, which is an annual payment of $393,000. And we also made that fire tax payment in the month of May, which came in at just over $6.5 million for the fiscal year 2024. I also wanted to highlight briefly some retirement payments that the city's been making. And this is something we're seeing increase this year. And you can think of it as a good increase because that means we're matching retirement for the employees. The employees are participating more in our 457 plan, which is great for retention and for hiring new employees. Back in 2021, the city only had 58 employees that participated in the 457. And at that time, the city matched $32,771 in the year. Last year, the city had 105 participants in the 457 plan, and the city matched over $268,000 for those retirement accounts. Also, the city has a defined benefit plan for employees hired prior to 2013, and that payment is just over $1 million.
and that payment is just over one million dollars annually. And I'm glad to answer any other questions you have on the financials for the month of May.
Any questions for Ms. Forster? Thank you. Do we have any announcements this evening? Ms. McGrew?
Thank you, Mayor. As most of us know, we had a board member pass away two weeks ago, Ms. Jackie Wickersham from the tourism board, so I will need to address that, and we wish her family all the sympathy and condolences, and our heart goes out to them.
Thank you for bringing that up. She will be missed and was a great community member and contributed a lot, so thank you for bringing that up. Anything else? We had no one sign up for our ten-minute public input, so we'll move into old business. We have one item. Item A, discussion and possible action on case MPA two four zero four dash zero zero one, master plan amendment request to add residential as an allowed use in Riverstone Pod B, and variance request to reduce required buffer. Mr. Green?
Again, thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council. This application went before a public hearing at our last meeting, and he is seeking to add residential as an approved use within Pod B of the Riverstone Development. Now, he is asking to build four structures containing eight living units, which would be duplexes, and reduce the required fifty-foot buffer where the property is adjacent to our A six zone property. He's seeking this buffer be reduced to a ten-foot buffer. A ten-foot buffer and ten-foot building setback as well. The staff has recommended approval of this application, subject to the installation of an eight-foot tall screening fence along the rear property line, and that the number of units be reduced from eight to six to simply keep in line with what is recommended in our comp plan. I emailed you folks a response from Mr. Gunn in this afternoon, and also placed a copy at your chair. His rebuttal was asking, if the council decides that the two lots are too much going from eight to six, I would like them to consider allowing just one unit there that could be considered an accessory dwelling or carriage house, again, with the concept being to have a nice village-style product as an entry into the community.
Thank you, Mr. Green. So we had that, and again, just to confirm during the hearings and the meetings, community meetings, we had no one speak against this project, right?
That's correct.
Okay, okay. And then staff is recommending approval with the two conditions you mentioned, with the, the screening fence and reduction from eight to six?
Yes, sir. Again, the reduction is just simply to keep in compliance with the recommendation of the comp plan.
Okay.
Personally, I don't think the additional two units that he's asking for, it would not cause any increase in traffic along the roadway there or on the school system.
Okay, okay. Any questions? Mr. Tolan?
I do have one, a bit of a rhetorical question, I guess, Mr. Green, but for the public's sake. I'm assuming that the, the setback asks are relative to the fact that this is a, a thin, narrow piece of property, and it's just not practical to, to adhere to the city guidelines. Is that, is that a fair statement?
Yes, sir, that, just the, the shape of the property does not lend itself for any commercial use that would be able to go in there and would make it much easier to build upon, just due to the nature of the configuration of the lot.
Okay, good enough, thank you.
And again, just to confirm, Mr. Green, in, in your opinion, I know was a proposed condition of eight to six, but in your, your opinion, the staff, the two extra units is not, wouldn't create any additional?
Correct.
High level of impact, correct? Okay. Mr. Watson?
Mr. Green, so the, during the public input meeting, was it presented as eight? I assume it was eight units. So the, and, I'm sorry, and so the, the, the recommendation going from eight to six is just to be in compliance with the comp plan, but I think just to reiterate what Mayor just said, it doesn't, it won't really cause any, any issues there if, if we say that there's eight.
In my opinion, no, sir.
Okay.
I would, I would suggest if, if council is inclined to approve, that we consider to maintain it at, at eight units, since it seems to be splitting hairs at that point, but. Any other comments or questions?
I think, I think eight's appropriate, since we need housing, and I think it's going to make the area look better, so with the setbacks and, and the privacy fence, I think it'll be, I think it'll be fine.
Agree. I would agree. Ms. McGrew?
If there's no further discussion, I'd like to make a motion to approve this with the eight units and the condition of the construction of the privacy fence along the rear property line.
Second.
So we have a motion and a second, any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed nay? All members voted for the motion. Thank you, Mr. Green.
Thank you.
We will move into new business. As I mentioned earlier, we have quite a few items that are just for discussion tonight, and anything you consider voting on next meeting, we have a, a few action items. Most of it is for discussion and information for us to consider between now and our next meeting, beginning with item A, discussion of resolution to establish a standard cable and video franchise fee of five percent. Ms. Forster?
We're looking out for all the revenue sources, and so the city is a participant of the Georgia Municipal Association's telecommunications and right-of-way management program, and our advisor is auditing cable and telephone franchise fee payments and contracts. The advisor has recommended that we pass the attached resolution as soon as possible. This will establish a standard cable franchise fee rate of five percent within our jurisdiction for existing and future providers. The city has been operating with a franchise free, pre-agreement solely with Comcast, and that, I had mentioned a few months ago, had recently expired and is automatically renewing on a month-to-month basis. So we're not asking for any decisions this evening, we will be asking for a motion next meeting to approve the resolution.
Thank you, Ms. Forster. Any questions? Item B, this is for discussion and a request for an appeal hearing by the Canton City Council for the denials of variance applications by the Board of Appeals. Mr. Green?
Good evening again. As the mayor has stated, the applicant applied for five variances from the Board of Appeals for the townhome project that's being located on the old hospital site off of Hospital Road. They had asked for the fifty-foot required buffer be reduced to ten feet, the fifty-foot building setback line be reduced, reduction of the beauty strip from two feet to one feet along the sidewalk, placing sidewalk along only one side of the streets, and eliminating the gates that are required on private roads or streets. The applicant submitted his, his appeal request, and he's only appealing two of the denials, the buffer reduction and the building setback reduction. The, the first step in an appeal is to ask if the mayor and city council will hear the appeal. If you decide to do that, then we will arrange a public hearing to be held, at which time he will present his request. If you decide not to hear it, then his next option is to go before the Superior Court of Cherokee County.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Green. First of all, we, we appreciate our variance Board of Appeals and, and their good work, and always looking out for the best interests of our codes and ordinances. As Mr. Green stated, this applicant is, is, is asking council to hear the appeal for only two of the five variances, one for the buff, buffer reduction, and one for the building setback reduction. I always think it's better for us to hear the, the appeal, so that we can make decisions versus the Superior Court of what, what's going on in our city. And, but I would say that if, if, if council is open to hearing the appeal, that we would condition that to only hearing the two variances that, that they have stated, the buffer reduction and buildings setback reduction, so. Comments, discussion?
To, to move forward, do we, do we do anything tonight, or do we do that?
I think, I think we, we could make a motion tonight if, if council is, is willing to hear that, so that we can get that scheduled. I think the earliest it would be able to be scheduled to be for, for an August hearing, that we can get that on agenda, but I think it'd be expedient to, to move forward tonight if we could make a decision.
If, if that's the case, I would make a motion to hear the variance appeal request on just the two variances that are in question, based with home.
Second.
A motion and a second? Any discussion? All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed nay? All members voted for the motion. Thank you, Mr. Green. Item C, discussion of request for right-of-way and alley abandonment along Teasley Street and Chordington, Tan yard Street.
Thank you again. Dr. Nations has requested that the city abandon two alleyways and one right-of-way. The twenty-foot alleyway alley that cuts through her property, it actually separates her property into two parcels, more or less. She would like the half of the twenty-foot alleyway that runs north to south on her western property line be abandoned, and ten foot of that be conveyed to her, and the forty-foot right-of-way along her southern property line be abandoned, and twenty foot of that right-of-way be conveyed to her. All the abiding property owners have been notified by certified mail. I did receive one phone call in, in, in opposition, and that is from the property owner on the western side of her property line. They were concerned that if that were to be abandoned, that would, that was their only way of accessing the bottom portion of their property. I was expecting some email or some form of communication from the property owners, but I did not receive it.
Thank you, Mr. Green.
There's one clarification on that. They've discovered that the city has already abandoned the alley that's between the two properties. That one was actually deeded already in the eighties. It came up when they were dealing with a wall issue there, somebody had hit the wall and, and doing a title search, they realized that's already happened, so that's off the table. It would just be the horizontal, the one that divides her property and the.
And the right-of-way.
Yeah.
Again, we'll be considering this and voting on this at the next meeting. I know in the past, we have the same alleys we have abandoned when, when all parties are, are in agreement, and there's no loss to either side. I, I think also in the past, our precedent has been if there is, you know, controversy over that, that, that we do not abandon it, and those parties are always free to pursue civil, civil action on those things, but again, it's, this is something we'll be considering at our, at our next meeting, and we'll see if we get official correspondence from the adjacent property owners as well, so we can act on the facts and information we have at hand at that time.
Well, I believe from what Mr. Dyer just described, the, the alleyway that was a concern to the neighbor has already been abandoned, right?
Yeah, I'm, well, I'm just wondering if they're more concerned about Teasley Street, which actually runs to their properties, so that might be what they're, I think, although the city has no, there's no street, it's just on paper, and there's already a driveway and some other stuff built, I think of parking a garage and obstructing it, so you would have to make some decisions about that right-of-way, are you going to go enforce it or not?
If we could just get clarification on those issues by the next meeting, and you share with council this new information, and, and anything else that we may need to know for making that decision. Ms. McGrew?
I'm not sure why we would want, why would we want to maintain control of that little strip of property? What do we use it for?
Which strip are you referring to?
The part that's not abandoned.
You're talking about the alley that runs in the middle of her property?
Of her property?
Yeah.
I don't think we have any use for it. It's just kind of a, of a burden, I would say, in, in Miss Nations' property.
Thank you.
Again, we have, we don't have a use, we've abandoned in the past when property owners on both sides agree, but when there is a dispute, then it's really not us, up, up to us necessarily to decide that, but I would rather them deal with that and, and with civil action, so.
All right.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Green. Our next two items are sort of interrelated, since they're both for discussion. Ms. Watson, I'm going to read them both, and if you discuss them both at the same time in, in, in interest of being efficient with our meeting tonight. So item D, discussion of the Ward of Task Order Six, Addendum One, for supplemental services for Brown Industrial Booster Pump and Water Line to Blacken Beach, in the amount of thirty nine thousand seven hundred and sixteen dollars. And then item E, discussion of the Ward of the Task Order Nine, Addendum One, for supplemental services for State Route Twenty, I five seventy-five water main replacement to Blacken Beach, in the amount of twenty seven thousand one hundred and three dollars.
Thank you. So yes, these two items are very related. Task Order Six was for the Brown Park Industrial Booster Pump Station, which is being designed to help stabilize the twelve ninety-two pressure zone and decommissioning of the Cochafur Street Booster Pump Station. When the award of the original task order for Task Order Six was completed, the engineer was unaware that the, there was an eight-inch line under five seventy-five, which kind of bottlenecks the twelve ninety-two pressure zone. Because of that, which is why Task Order Nine was created to put a sixteen-inch water line underneath of five seventy-five. They began the scope for Task Order Nine under the Task Order Six, which is why additional funds are used, there was some additional modeling that had to be done because of that eight-inch line, as well as some changes to the design development report, which is what the thirty nine thousand seven hundred and sixteen for Task Order Six, Addendum One would be for. And then for Task Order Nine, the addendum is due to, though the original scope was to put a sixteen-inch water main under five seventy-five. We met with GDOT, and they asked that we apply for a variance to put a sixteen-inch on five seventy-five because they don't allow that. The design was completed, or not completed, but substantially completed, and we went to GDOT for a variance, and they denied it. So we had to, now we've had to come back and redesign and change some things, which is what the additional funds are for, for that change. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, GDOT. So it all makes sense to you, and it's all, here is, so any questions for Ms. Watson on these two? Again, we'll consider those at the next meeting.
Thank you.
And thank you. Item F, discussion of the proposal, provide wall foundation investigation for the River Mill Pedestrian Bridge at the Mill on Etowah from heat and linebacked in the amount of twenty six thousand two hundred dollars. Ms. Watson?
Thank you. So a, a few months ago, city council approved us moving forward with alternate one for the River Mill Pedestrian Bridge. And in that alternative, it has a sole nail wall, and a found, wall foundation investigation will have to be completed by a geotechnical engineer, and this proposal is for that work, that geotech work, so I'd be happy to answer any questions.
And that's on the Mill on Etowah side, correct? The Mill on Etowah side?
No, it's on the other side.
Okay, okay. Any questions for Ms. Watson? Okay. Okay. Item H, discussion and possible action on this item, on a quick claim deed, deed at one forty-two Reinhardt College Parkway to Signet Clinical LLC. Mr. Dyer?
I think we skipped an item.
Oh, I'm sorry, I skipped G, moving ahead, so. Wishful thi- wishful thinking, though, we'll come back to that, so, hold your thoughts. Item G, discussion of the Ward of Task Order Seven, for Reinhardt College Parkway Utility Relocation, State Route Five Connector at Highway one forty, intersection improvement project to Keck and Wood, in the amount of forty-three thousand seven hundred and fifty dollars.
Thank you.
Ms. Watson?
Um, so this is in relation to our project, what we have there at Reinhardt College Parkway and Highway one forty, um, the roundabout project. Some of our utilities are in conflict with, um, the plans, so we will have to have those, the water and sewer lines designed and relocated. Um, and so this, this task order is for design of those, um, relocation. Be happy answering questions.
And we be responsible for just twenty percent of that, or, or is this all of ours?
So, with, it depends on if our water lines were, and sewer lines were there before the right-of-way was there. So, it, it's prior ri- a prior rights thing. I'm not sure, we probably will be required to pay for these out of the water and sewer fund.
I'm, I'm certain we don't have written easements in that area.
Okay. Okay. Thank you for that clarification. Any other questions? Now, without further ado, move on to item H, discussion possible action on a quick claim deed at one forty-two Reinhardt College Parkway to Signet, Signet Clinical LLC. Mr. Dyer?
You may remember a couple, a few months ago, we did the same thing. Uh, city, it's, it's the property below the, above the hotels on that side of the street, Brightsesser has sold. When they just sailed before, uh, they, they discovered the city has a, was granted a power line easement many years ago, and so they're just asking that we release that easement on the record. So, we did it for the one property, this is just the next property up. I don't know why Brightsesser didn't just ask us to do the whole thing, but they broke it up into pieces.
Okay. So, there's nothing that we need there, we don't need the easement any longer, and so this is really just normality, correct?
No, no.
Questions, comments?
And they would like, we would like to take action tonight, just 'cause they have a closing.
Okay.
If there are no further questions, uh, I'd like to make a motion to approve the quick claim deed at one forty-two Reinhardt College Parkway to Signet Clinical LLC.
Motion and second. You need further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. All members voted for the motion. Item I, discussion of intergovernmental agreement with Cherokee County for maintenance of Technology Ridge Parkway Phase One. Mr. Ingram?
Thank you, Mayor and Council. This item is for discussion and presentation only, will be asked for action next week. Um, as you're, I'm sure you're aware, uh, here recently, the county completed the Technology Ridge Parkway, that's about a half-mile section between Bluff Parkway and the Falcon Heard, Heard Drive. Now comes up the question of maintenance, and I think the city would like to maintain it consistent with the other streets within the city. So, with the county and the city, and you have an IGA before you, that's going to basically gonna turn over the, all of the rights of the maintenance of that street from curb to curb to ditch to ditch, and that will afford us the opportunity to maintain it, just like we do, uh, everything else. As well, in that IGA, also gives us the ability to permit any curb cuts. That's in addition to just the typical right-of-way maintenance, so we'll permit all the curb cuts on that section of road as well. So, again, this is no action tonight, we'll be asking for action next week. If you have any questions, uh, I'll try to answer them now, or I can get those to you before next week.
Thank you. It's a beautiful parkway and an important parkway for the city, so I think maintained our standards makes sense, and I think probably even more critical is us being able to control the curb cuts on that, so. Any other questions for Mr. Ingram? Okay, moving right along. Item J, discussion of requests by Northside Hospital Cherokee for city contributions to the construction of a new traffic signal at the hospital.
Mr. Ingram? Thank you. Yeah, a little over a month, maybe a couple of months ago, Northside Hospital approached the city about assisting in a joint project to do an intersection there just south, on its campus, just south of the existing intersection. You have a site plan in front of you, and one of the reasons why they've come to us now, one, to mitigate some, what they state as congestion at their, at the current intersection, but also you'll see there's a number of medical office buildings, parking areas, as well as parking deck, that they're, uh, scheduled to construct over the next couple of years. So, they come to us, as well as the county, to have a three-way joint project, joint effort on this, uh, intersection. They estimate the cost to be about six hundred thousand dollars, and so they, uh, they're proposing that two hundred thousand dollar key come from each en- entity. They have approached the county, and from what I understand, the county is amenable to contributing two hundred thousand. So, they come to you tonight, and, uh, again, no action tonight, but we'll ask for action next week. So, please consider, if you have any questions on this, please let me know. Um, one of the things, and I'll, I'll throw in there, that if this is approved by council, they will come later to amend the, uh, road impact fee agreement, so that that two hundred thousand dollars could be added to that, just, uh, as is the original cost of, uh, Northside Cherokee Boulevard. So, if you have any questions, I'd be more than happy to answer those, or either get responses back to you as soon as possible.
Okay. And again, that request is up to, but not to exceed two hundred thousand dollars, so.
That's correct, Mayor.
If it winds up costing more, the signal costing more, that would be paid for by the hospital, the developer, correct?
That is correct, yes, sir.
Okay. Uh, and we also, uh, again, have invited and look forward to a future presentation from Northside Hospital, just talking about their future and plans and development, uh, that they have ongoing, that's, it's exciting, and, uh, expanding the capacity of the hospital, all that's going on there, um, and the additional property that they own, so we can, can continue to be good partners and, and discuss how best to develop the area and improve it for, for all of our citizens, so. Any questions for Mr. Ingram at this time? Mr. Johnson?
Mr. Ingram, what's the timeframe, uh, to, to construct that, that, that intersection or that additional entrance?
That's a very, very good question, I'm not sure that we have the answer to that, but I'll get that, uh, answer, and I'll, I'll share that with the whole mayor, mayor and council.
Thank you.
All right. Anything else? Okay.
Item K, discussion and possible action on this item, to dispose of property located at Short Drive and accept the purchase and sales agreement from Generations Church of God, Inc., in the amount of five thousand nine hundred and sixty-nine dollars. Mr. Ingram?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. As the mayor mentioned, we are asking for action tonight because time is, is of the essence. The city owns a very small piece of property, about point one five acres, and it's actually in the unincorporated area of the county near, on Short Drive, that's just north of Old Vandevere, between, uh, Ball Ground and five seventy-five. It is literally like a postage stamp-sized piece of property. I went back in the records, I couldn't find any specific records when it was purchased, I, the last sale was back in nineteen sixty, so the city must have held that property for a long time. We think in anticipation of water service, to put a possible water tank on that area, now, come today, we don't, that's not even in our water service area. So, the, right now, city management finds little use in keeping that property. So, come to today, now, the same property owner owns everything around it. And about a year ago, they came to the city council and asked if we would dispose of that property to the same property owner that owns all the property around it. Uh, Mr. Dyer, and, and he may want to speak to this, said that the way that we can do that is find a fair market value for that property. And now, they have a buyer for that property, so we have a fair market, an arms-length transaction, fair market value of that. And, uh, and it has come to, when you calculate it based on the point one five acres, it calculates to five thousand nine sixty-nine. That extends to about forty thousand dollars an acre, if you just want to know the math there. But they're asking for five thousand nine sixty-nine, uh, willing to pay for that point one five acres. Again, time is of the essence, so they need to know this as quickly as possible, so that they can turn that property for sale. So, uh, again, city management, we don't find any city use for that property, we think that this is the proper way to dispose of it, and we'll ask for your, uh, approval to have the mayor sign those closing statements.
Okay. Any questions?
I'd like to make a motion.
Mr. Waterman?
I'd like to make a motion to approve, uh, the disposal of the property located at Short Drive and accept the purchase and sales agreement from Generations Church of God Incorporated, in the amount of five thousand nine hundred and sixty-nine dollars and zero cents.
Second.
A motion and a second. Any further discussion? All say, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. All members voted for the motion.
Thank you, Mayor.
Mr. Ingram? Mr. Peppers?
Good evening, just a few items tonight. I, I did want to let you know that, uh, a few of us got to go and attend the Georgia Municipal Association Convention, uh, down in Savannah, representing the city. Uh, Mr. Yon did a noble job carrying our flag and the parade of flags at the opening ceremony, uh, and the mayor also did a great job as our voting delegate, representing the city in the, uh, GMA election. We had a good time, there was a lot of good information while we were down there. Uh, one of the things that always impresses me, and, and I'm always, uh, I'm always eager to hear, is when we're in classes and pictures of Canton pop up in the presentations, or references to Canton pop up into the presentations. Uh, I know the mayor and Mr. Yon, uh, can, can attest to that while they were there, but it's always good to be highlighted as one of the cities who are doing great things in our city. Couple of things that are going on, if you've, if you've been around town lately, you have seen that Cherokee County is moving forward with the, uh, paving projects. Recall that we, again, agreed to a contract where the cities in Cherokee County and the county are going together on our paving this summer. Uh, those paving projects have started in the city limits at this time, and so Reservoir Drive is a great example of one that's being paved right now by the county's vendor, uh, and so there are other projects that will be forthcoming. Most of the paving is up in the area, uh, uh, around, uh, around the old Mill Village, uh, north of Riverstone additionally. Uh, we had a little bit of delay on the demolition at Tippin's Elementary School, but in the actual school, they got in, they got the site secured and found a nest of turkey vulture eggs, and so we had to wait for the eggs to hatch and those, and those to get out of there, but they are gone, and so demolition started earlier this week on that particular site. Uh, we are capturing images of that, and, uh, so that we can have that for historical knowledge as well. Uh, if you had a chance to be in town during the Fourth of July holiday, you know that social media was very kind to us this year, everybody enjoyed the fireworks display that was put on, uh, at Riverstone. Uh, it was probably one of the best fireworks displays that we've ever had as a city. Adam Dodson was sweating bullets this year. Uh, we, we got a little bit of negative feedback last year, and so I know that he eagerly wanted this to be the best show that we've ever had, and I think he, I think he succeeded on that. And then, uh, we surprised, uh, many people by doing fireworks again the next night, as it related to our first Friday concert with Mark Wills. We had a great crowd for, for July fifth, and everybody seemed to enjoy that, that show. Um, events like that are not possible without two specific groups of employees, and that's our public works team, and that's our public safety team, uh, at the police department. I want to let you know, on the public work side, those, those folks started on the Fourth of July, getting ready, getting everything set up for a parade. They stayed out there, they got everything removed after the parade, dealt with barricades on Martin Luther King for the fireworks, got the stage located that night. They did not leave after starting that day around lunchtime on the Fourth. They did not leave until around two-thirty in the morning the following day, trying to get everything set up for First Friday. Then they turned around, and they were back out here early on Friday morning, getting ready to set up, uh, for that particular event. And so, they didn't finish that night until very late either. Uh, you know, they, of course, of course, we pay them overtime, and they do get special event pay for private events, but that is a lot of work that that individual crew puts in, and it's not always cool when they're doing it. Uh, I got to talking with them on Friday, and they were setting up the stage and getting everything set up for First Friday. They left there and immediately went over to the parks to grab garbage from the night before. Uh, so that is, that is just a team that does tremendous work. Also, our police team, uh, you know, you never know what to expect when you do fireworks or, or, or large events, and I know Chief Farrell had a big, uh, team, uh, set up to assist with those. Uh, everybody had a great time, everybody, uh, uh, put their hours in to make sure that those were great events, and it's just not possible without the great team that we have. Wanted to mention, of course, when I mention that, Belinda Hardy does a fantastic job with First Friday, you know, I, it's, it, you're gonna have a hard time finding any other city in the state that does a First Friday as well as we do. Uh, we have to remind her sometimes that sometimes she could be a drill sergeant, 'cause she gets in her mind specifically how something needs to go, but she almost always delivers it, and it's something that our citizens really enjoy. Uh, want to give a shout-out, uh, tonight, also to Brittany Anderson while she's here, and Kevin Turner. Uh, as you know, our Historic Preservation Commission's been working for a number of years on residential guidelines. That did come to a vote with the HPC earlier this month, and so it will come to you for your consideration in the future, uh, regardless of what the decision is. Uh, a lot of people don't understand the work that goes into creating those guidelines and pulling information. I know Lauren and our communications team has helped out with some of that information as well, and so regardless of what the final outcome is, I think it's important that we recognize the staff for their hard work on that. Uh, speaking of, we also have a community development intern with us tonight, Mr. Tyler Peoples, we're glad to have him, he's helping us on some, some, uh, projects with, uh, with Kevin Turner's team, so we're glad for him to be here with us tonight and kind of see how the sausage is made here at City Hall through council meetings. Um, I'm happy to answer any questions that you might have tonight.
Any questions?
It's been a month since I've seen some of you on the stage, so. Oh, yeah, Team Member of the Month. Forgot about this, Amy Lutz, who is one of our, um, municipal court clerks, uh, was recognized as our Team Member of the Month, we were able to surprise her earlier this week. Um, Amy is, uh, she is a petite ball of fire and energy when it comes to the court, and, uh, she is very quickly become a favorite of her colleagues in that building, because she's just got a wonderful presence, always has a smile, good humor, uh, and gets the job done. So, we were, we were glad to recognize her as our Team Member of the Month for June.
Awesome. Any questions? Thank you, Mr. Peppers.
Thank you.
Just double-check and make sure there's no council-introduced items? All right, uh, again, I just, I want to, congratulations, Ms. Lutz, uh, for, for her great work and being recognized and by her peers, uh, and I just want to second, uh, Mr. Pepper's praise of our public works and our, our staff and team, uh, that, that worked so hard, uh, Fourth, Fourth of July. It was a wonderful, wonderful celebration of our nation's independence. Uh, I've spent the time, I, I did float the fourth down the Etowah, and just kayaked down the Etowah that morning with a bunch of our citizens, and it was so great seeing them and the families out enjoying our river, uh, and then moving on to parade and, and fireworks. Uh, as, as Mr. Pepper said, we were always waiting for criticism, but, uh, I did not receive one negative criticism about our fireworks display, and if you, all who saw it and witnessed it, and the, the grand finale was just, is still, I'm just kind of blown away. And the next night, First Friday was such a wonderful celebration, uh, and, uh, again, another amazing fireworks show, I, uh, uh, got to enjoy that with, with Lauren on top of the, the parking deck, and it was a great, uh, presentation, our police department, again, kudos to you guys for making sure that was done safely, and, uh, glad there was no damage to the facility there, so, uh, it was a, just a wonderful day, and, uh, you're proud that, uh, we live where we do and we celebrate in style. So, congratulations to all the team, again, for making all that work, and, and, and I think pretty flawlessly this, this year, so, uh, in, in the heat, uh, so it's greatly appreciated, and I believe our citizens thoroughly enjoyed it and appreciate it as well, so. Um, and, and on the, uh, HPC, the, the matter that will be coming before us, uh, I know Mr. Peppers thanked our staff, which is, is, uh, totally overdue. I also want to thank the work of our HPC commission members, who have also been working very hard over the past year, uh, on, on those proposals, and, uh, I know they're very serious about it and care deeply about it, and are very passionate about it, and again, regards to the decision, uh, the tremendous amount of work and thoughtfulness that have gone, that has gone into that. And again, regards to the decision, the tremendous amount of work and thoughtfulness that have gone, that has gone into that proposal and those guidelines is greatly appreciated by everyone. So, thanks for their hard work. So, we, we can't do what we do up here without our boards and commissioners and citizens, and certainly our staff, so. I believe that's all I have tonight. And with that, we will, I'm surprised, you know, three weeks ago, or a few weeks ago, our agenda was much shorter than tonight's, and so, but it was a three-hour meeting. So, I'm repressed with everyone's ability to, to move forward and muscle through, and thanks to the great information that was shared with us tonight. With that, I will take a motion to adjourn.
Second.
I can't motion, but I'd like someone else.
Motion to adjourn.
And we'll accept Mr. Johnson's second on that, so. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay? Nay? We are adjourned. Thank you, everyone.